Good evening, Lieutenant Carl. This meeting to order, we have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dandall.
Let's say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father,
Lord in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas?
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot?
Here.
Councilmember Warren White. Councilmember Troy Como. Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dall.
Here.
All right, public comment, we have any cards?
Nope.
No cards tonight, please silence your phones. Madam Clerk, Adam Tua.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of July 1st, 2025, which will be published on July 16th, 2025.
I need a motion. So a move. Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Ron Davis. Is there any questions or comments on the minutes from July 1st? Anybody? Hearing, seeing, none, please vote your machines. There we go. Please vote your machines again. Thank you. 3A.
Ordinance number 2020-518, an ordinance amending and reenacting Article 2, Mobile Home Parks Division 3 Operational Standards of the City of New Iberia Code of Ordinances to enhance the standards of new mobile home parks.
I need a motion of this public hearing.
Motion.
Okay, so I have Councilman David Merrill and Councilman Ron Davis. That was quick on the draw. Any public comment on this item? Now I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Now we go to the main motion. Can I get a motion? Councilwoman Brooke Marcot?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Now it's time for discussion. We had some homework to do. We did our best, but I'm sure it's not good enough, so we'll end up correcting and discussing as we go along. We put together a draft, got it to y'all a little early, and then put it in the packet. So, these are the items that, as we see, we discuss, because we end up having to watch it again. When you have over an hour of discussion and a lot of comments, a lot of opinions, a lot of just stuff floating around, it's really good. On the flip side, it's hard to catch all of that. So if we miss something, that's why we're here. On the roads, of course, they're concrete or asphalt only. We didn't dictate how a private road was built, if it's private, but on the flip side, we have a yearly inspection, so if the road's broken up and there's issues, that's going to show up in the inspection, they're going to have to fix it. Because that would be up to them. We, if it would be a public street, well then, of course, they have to build it to our public street standards, or our, you know, our regular street standards. So that was one thing. Sewer, we said they could tap, if they build it along a roadway that the sewer's there, and our capacity's good, they can tap into those sewer lines. If they build something bigger and put an interior road or build it in a fashion that we don't have sewer, it's their responsibility to pay for sewer, just like any other developer. We said trailers would be 10 years or newer. That was, you know, one of the things. The trash is not in our contract. They are going to have to do their own trash, because it's their own development, so we can't have them after they develop a bunch of trailers and then say, okay, you know, Pelicans needs to pick it up. That's not in their contract. So that's something that they'll have to provide, a service or dumpsters, because it's just like an apartment complex, the same thing. We talked about, and whether we do that, and this is a separate ordinance, so we do it at another time, but we talked about possibly making all trailer replacements, but right now, we're just talking about the new trailer parks. But we did talk about a lot that we might want to change, that any trailers that change in town, remember if you change a trailer, you have a year to do it, used to be six months, now it's a year, that they would be 10 years old or newer. So that's something that, it doesn't fit in this ordinance, but it was talked about a lot on the tape.
Right.
Let's see. I know I had another one. I think, I think that's all I got. So now I'd like to open it up, I just wanted to give a little summary, because there was a lot of information, so. Just speak, yes, sir.
So Mayor, I guess when it gets to the planning and zoning, or it gets to our permit department, depending how big the track of land is, we, at that time, have decided they need a detention pond?
Correct, all of our subdivision ordinances are in place, and we, you know, we enforce those. So when you bring a plat, you could have to have a detention pond, you could have to have a sewer plant, you could have to have a fire hydrant, and they have to pay for that if we don't have a fire hydrant, close enough. So all of those things come into play, and remember what we do as we have this kind of developer-friendly meeting, we get all the utilities in the room, all the department heads in the room, right here, and talk about the whole thing before they submit anything, so that they know what they have to do. But this doesn't get rid of any of our other ordinances, just like if it's a compliance issue down the road, okay, we have a compliance department, that's how we can police it. If it's, to start, we go through a process.
So should that be part of this ordinance, that all the conditions would be upon approval of planning, zoning, and permit department?
Well, it always is. In other words, anytime you come to do something, I mean, if Jeff thinks I need to add that into every, you know, into this, I could, but basically...
I just don't want them to come back and say, oh, it wasn't in there, but if the permit department says you need to do it, you need to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, is every one of these going to be a subdivision?
They might not all be subdivisions. You know, if it's a small lot and you're putting two trailers, or you're putting four trailers along a road that fits the zone, you've still got to fit the zone in, you've still got to fit every other criteria, so it might not all be a subdivision.
So...
Okay, yes, sir.
So, in connection with Dan was saying, after the planning and zoning approves it, does final approval have to come before the council as well? That's what I thought, right?
If there's a, if there's a change, in other words, if they go to planning, zoning...
That's what I'm asking Jeff, because if it's not a subdivision, it doesn't, right?
Well, or zoning change.
Yeah, zoning change.
Zoning change or subdivision comes back.
Yeah, but I mean, it could be one lot that you change in the zone and all.
That's what I was about to ask.
It has to come to us.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all of our other safeguards, our steps are still in place, correct, yeah. We're not getting rid of any tool that the city has to make sure what we get is...
So which zoning is this, R? Six, is it?
Yes, six.
Okay, how much R6 do we have?
There are some spots you could put a trailer park now, many spots you got to change. I think we don't have a lot of R6s.
So most of them will have to go through.
Most of them, I think, will have to come through planning and zoning.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir, everybody got their hand up? Who was, Councilman David?
Yeah, I was, I was going back to, I know this is all about the new trailer parks and subdivisions, but I'm kind of going back to some of them that's already there existing.
And I, and I don't mind that, I think we have to make that a separate thing.
Yeah, that's fine, I want it to be something separate, because
It needs to be.
I also talk to people about that too, in some of these areas that live in the area of some of these trailer parks, especially on Deer Street and Fountain Lou and them other areas. And they look at it, some of them heard about what we talked about in the meeting, and they don't have a problem with the new stuff, but they think we ought to look at, put some, you know, restrictions on the people that still have theirs there that's horrible, you know, stuff like that.
I don't say no, but I think that's a discussion for another day, and it brings up, I mean, I don't want me and you to spend all night debating. You're not debating and talking about it. But, you know, you look at both sides of it, I don't want to make something so restrictive that somebody's made an investment, they, they're paying for their investment, and then we make them do things that are going to cost too much money, and they turn the keys over to us. You know, you don't, you just got to watch, I mean...
Well, I understand that.
That's why I think that would be a whole nother big old discussion.
But you, you know what I'm talking about, if you go in some of those areas...
And some of that, I really think could be handled now with compliance. If you want to know the truth.
That's cool too.
I think we have things in place that we wouldn't have to jeopardize if somebody's going to say, well, it's not worth putting the money, you know, peace out. So I would, you know, maybe me and you go take a ride.
That's fine.
And then, once we look at that, there'll be some things I think compliance can handle.
I just want to make sure that the other constituents that
That everybody's represented.
They feeling comfortable about new stuff coming in and where they're living at where old stuff is, you know?
I agree. Councilman Ron Davis had his hand up next.
That was one, more or less in line with what David was speaking of in this new ordinance that I would love to see in the old ordinance, if it's not there, and that is under 50, that's 74, shall be unlawful for any trailer park owner to allow abandoned junk, dilapidated strip, broken down trailers to be stockpiled, located, or permitted, you know, in a trailer park for a period of over 30 days. I mean, it just seemed like, that's where it should be.
And again, we might be able to do that with compliance, so. Yes, sir.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have two different things, you have some construction standards
Correct.
that I don't think you're going to apply to old trailer parks that are already built.
I don't think I can.
But then you got some operational standards.
Correct.
This is, those you can apply to the old trailer parks.
Correct, and I think, I think that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
One more.
And I got one, I finally figured it out right there.
Section 50.
I'm sorry, I said, go ahead, I'll tell you.
All right. 50, that's 71, the employment of certain persons and manager.
That's, I couldn't, I'll be totally honest.
That was on there.
I couldn't read my handwriting, okay?
Okay.
And as you're talking, I'm making a note, and then I said, darn, it's about the manager. Because where we talk about being of quality, character, or whatever it is, I don't know that you can have that. I don't know how you decide that. Okay, you could have a guy who was rot, Johnny rotten, and he turned his life around, and now he owns a trailer park, and he's the best guy in the world. So I don't think that this body, and I'm not trying to insult myself or any of us, we should be the judge of character of anybody. That's not what we're supposed to be doing. So that was my last one, I'm so glad you brought that up, that I was thinking, we should scratch that. I don't think that we should be worried about somebody's character. If they can manage a trailer park, I'm fine with that. And if they can't, we get them on compliance, we get them on something else. Thank you, Ron, you, I couldn't read, look, it's right here, and I said, man, man, what is that?
Take over. Take over the writing, man.
That's it, is that everything?
Yeah, that was basically it, because that one, I think, is is picked up somewhere else in here that does it. But yeah, I'm glad we feel the same way on that one.
Yes, sir, thank you. You spoke already, so Councilman Troy Como, and I'll come back to you.
I want to apologize, that email that came, it just went right by me, I missed it to try and get those suggestions in earlier. So I apologize for that, but I agree with Mr. Davis, that, and you, Mayor, that 50-71, I was going to move that we just delete that 50-71. It is somewhat covered, Mr. Davis, I believe you that in charge of a responsible attendant. I think that's probably the best guidance that we can give, and then, then we we're not involving ourselves at that level. So, the, I think that one thing that I would like to add, or if we can, would be to interpret the difference between private roads and, and public roads, if there would be a simple clause that we could add. Because it talks about the homogeneous material and support the applied traffic, concrete or asphalt, but it, it later talks about curbing. The parking site will be in 26 feet measured from the back of the curb at the front of the site. So if it's a private road...
Well, that, that was for the parking space, if you were along a road, okay?
Right.
Then you'd need to define how much, I don't want the car sticking out in the road, okay? So if the trailer was along the road and you put parking spots in, that's why we said they had to be 26 feet.
Yeah, so I would just ask that we indicate that, because it's not, if it's not, if it's a private road, there probably won't be a curb to measure that from. So I would just, if we can just kind of plug in something that, it'll be an easier read and less confusion.
I don't disagree.
So that would, so a private road can actually still be an open ditch, as long as it's a blacktop street.
Yes, it just needs to be concrete and blacktop.
And a concrete parking pad.
Parking pad, or asphalt parking pad.
Right. So, that, that was just something that I think will give us a little bit more clarity.
No, great.
And, and I think it seems like we're all in agreements, agreeance with the 10 years, so maybe something that we could add to the, to the existing trailer parks, that any new mobile homes brought into existing trailer parks would be 10 years young or less.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would kind of start the trend to upgrading, and not, we don't want to bring in something that's 30 years old.
To live in some of the quality and to be safe.
Yes.
That's, yes, sir.
You could just take out the word "new" at the end of, near the end of 50-72. Shall be moved on to any mobile home park site. I mean, I think if you want to prevent, if the site is an existing site, then I'm not sure you're requiring a new trailer, or a 10-year-old, or younger trailer on an, on an existing site.
That's true.
So if you said, "onto any mobile home park site", then you're, you're eliminating a "move on to any site" in the future.
So we would just come right here, and it would be...
New or existing.
Just take the new.
New or existing.
Or new or existing, yeah.
But new or existing.
Okay.
And parentheses somewhere, or whatever.
New or existing.
Either way works.
No, either way, new or existing works both ways.
We'd have to change the name of the ordinance too, though, right? Because it says standards of new mobile home parks.
Yep.
So that wouldn't...
But that's the only thing that refers to existing mobile home parks is that one law.
We would, some kind of way, still need to add that to our current trailer park ordinance though, right?
This rewrites the trailer park.
Yeah, it's going to be rewriting.
That's what I was saying.
So then you would change
So I...
the name of the ordinance.
I agree, you take "new" out of the title.
Yeah.
Then...
Then it applies to all of them.
But does that, does that open up that someone can come and interpret that the existing trailer park needs to meet all these codes immediately? That's not what we were trying to do, we were trying to do something for the new ones, and then catch the old ones up separately, so if you make...
I'm sorry.
If you make this for all of them, then are we saying that they have to meet all these requirements?
You'd have a grandfather clause.
You'd have to just have a grandfather clause or something, that, that doesn't do that. That was why, I mean, I could be wrong, that was why I was trying to concentrate and laying on a new trailer parks.
Right.
Boom, and then go back and do something with the existing. Because I didn't want to mix it up, that someone, you know, after us, would try to make people remodel.
This replaces the existing.
Does it add?
I mean...
Okay.
This is the only one we're going to have.
Yeah, but...
Then do we have to do some more work to figure out what we want to include, or do we just have to have a grandfather clause?
Simple grandfather.
Well, that's, that's to Jeff. Because I don't want to make the interpretation that...
I'm looking.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
Brooke, did you have anything?
My only thing was to add, for existing, like what Mr. Ricky had mentioned at the last meeting, that it needs to be 10 years or younger, the trailer. So that was the only thing I saw.
Okay.
But then, as Mr. Ron pointed out, with clause 50-72, 50-71, that does need to be striked.
Right, okay, okay. Back to Mayor Pro Tim, and then I'll come back around this way.
My question to Jeff is if, if we're going to leave existing in it, then we can address the clauses of existing trailer parks. If we're going to try to, you know, to try to clean up some of the areas that Mr. Merrill was talking about, I don't want to miss the opportunity, and, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes as well, you know? But I don't want to miss the opportunity to try to address, you know, cleaning up some of these spots, because I'm getting the calls too. But I understand, but are we going to do a totally separate ordinance? In that case, then we just better leave "new" and not existing on this one.
Yeah, I wish...
That's right.
I thought I was making it...
If we leave existing in there, then we could, we gonna...
I thought I was making it simpler to say, this, this address, new trailer parks, and I didn't realize this was going to strike everything of the other one that we had.
Because other people listen, looking at, listen to that, and they listen to what we doing, but they're still going back to these other trailer parks.
Oh, no, I know, I know, but that's why I think it's one step at a time.
Right.
Jeff had his hand up, I was...
Yeah, yeah, we could say in 70, this division applies to all mobile home parks, except that building standards shall apply only to new mobile home parks. Post 25.
There you go, there you go.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, I like that.
Shouldn't we have, say, post 2025, you know, going forward, so that you have a cutoff?
I think the cutoff is when it's effective, which is when
When we adopt it.
Mayor signs it.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, I mean, yes, sir, Councilman Davis?
Yeah, there's one more. And 50-77, skirting. As it reads, all mobile homes must be provided with manufacturer-approved skirting.
Or, or if you keep going, or...
Party plank material or 26-gauge pre-finished metal sheeting.
I gave them three choices, in other words, some trailer parks just say manufacturer-only, okay? But people get too creative, I'm not being ugly, I see people put wood or plywood, and it's not even treated, I see people keep put rusty tin, I see people put salvage stuff, you know, and it just doesn't look good. So that was three choices that, although I like salvage stuff, that was three choices that gave you something clean and new that was durable.
Okay, I was just wondering what manufacturer-approved was, but I see that you did give those options.
Trailer manufacturers will sell you, when they sell you the trailer, they sell you the skirting, and it matches the trade.
It's manufacturer-approved.
Yeah. So I was trying to be a little flexible.
If you bought it with the trailer, it's okay.
Yes.
Correct.
Mayor, so what is considered, how many mobile homes to make a park?
Twelve.
Hold on, I'll let her look it up.
Maximum distance.
Twelve per acre.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's 12, but I'm not positive.
Minimum.
Yeah, I think it's like, per acre.
Maximum, maximum is 12 per acre.
Shall be 12.
But I don't know the minimum.
So you're saying the minimum they can do is an acre in a city?
No, no, I'm saying that
That's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
What's the minimum? What happened?
She's looking up, I don't know what the minimum is.
Say if they have two existing mobile homes now, one left, and it's over a year, you can't put one back, oh, I want to make this a mobile home park.
Well, let her look it up, because, you know, I know we define it, because I know in the past, people have come and they debated if they were a trailer park or not, like, because of those inspections. So, you know, an individual trailer's not a trailer park, and not subject to that, it's subject to compliance and everything else. But there's been some talk about that, I just don't remember what the minimum number was.
I'm just concerned with our other ordinance, that within a year, you can put one back, they move it, and the other one gets moved or torn down, they got two lots right there, I want to make this a mobile home park.
I understand. But we have minimum setbacks, you know, you won't have room to make it a mobile home park.
But wouldn't a mobile, but we stating that a mobile home park would be 10 trailers, I think, but this is a maximum of 12 per acre.
No, but we, but we need to know...
But this is max 12 per acre.
Yeah, but we need to know, Dan's right, we need to know what the minimum.
That's exactly it.
It took 10 trailers to constitute an acre.
I don't know, that's what she's looking at, that's what she's looking at.
I think I saw it somewhere, uh, last time.
Yeah, that's why she's looking it up. Yes, sir, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah.
With my, back of my head.
So water system, the water shall be obtained from faucets only.
Well, it's lock of water.
Okay.
Facets only.
And no common drinking cups shall be permitted. I don't know, this is the new ordinance, man.
Yeah, well, we, new ones, made it from the old ones.
Yeah, that is kind of weird.
Okay, let's, let's take that out too.
Let's, we can probably revisit that. 78-80, 50-78-80.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's take that out. Thank you, Troy.
So wait, I got one more.
Can you top that one?
The owner and/or operator of each trailer park shall keep and maintain such park and all toilets, showers, and other equipment, and other improvements in connection there within a clean and sanitary condition. I'm not, I'm not sure.
That's from the old ordinance, but I mean, the person that's in the trailer is going to do that.
Unless you have an outdoor bathroom.
Yeah, could that have been to something like some common space or something, because, you know? I don't want to own a trailer park if I have to go clean that.
No common cups, no common toilets.
That's it.
We might want to just revisit that as well. It just didn't seem, didn't seem like it applied. I mean, I don't spend a lot of time in mobile home parks, but...
I spent so much time on the, what we were talking about.
Right, yeah. That, that's, that's all I got.
Okay.
If you was a good landlord, you would take care of that.
Depends on the rent. Yes, sir.
So, 50-79-81, it says, you know, shall provide with safe and adequate provision for collection and removal of waste. I've seen several trailer parks where they put the dumpster on the streets, you know, on the side of the street, in the street. Should we actually on prop, on their existing property of the trailer park, and not in the city right of way or city?
Yes, I like that.
Because some of them put them on that street, because the garbage truck says, I don't, can't get on your property, so they put it on the street, and now it's in the street on the edge of that street.
And it's tearing up the blacktop.
The blacktop.
And plus, it's real unsightly, yes, let's do that.
Put it on private, on the private property or existing.
Pass the right of way.
Pass the right of way.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Huh? Two on a lot is a trailer park.
Two on a lot.
I think it's a great idea.
Really? Come on there.
There's got to be more than that.
No, I, I, one of those, I mean, I couldn't swear, I saw 10.
Two individuals or two in a park.
Read that part, let her read it.
That's not Fred's writing, is it?
No, no, we've done with that.
Trailer or mobile home park means a lot of record on which two or more occupied trailers or mobile homes are harbored, either free of charge or for revenue, together with any building structure or enclosures used as part of the equipment of such park.
Two individuals or two in a park, that's a difference.
Still not breaking it off.
A big difference.
Well, I mean, that's how it's written.
Start making mobile home parks with all these little empty lots around here.
Sir?
And a mobile home park has tighter restrictions, has to be inspected, has to come get a license. I mean, it doesn't, as, as the regulatory body, it doesn't hurt us, it, it actually helps us.
I just don't want them to make empty lots that we have two mobile homes and a subdivision that houses, become a little mobile home park.
They have to be R6.
Yeah, zoning changes.
Or change, yeah. You get enough support, you can change any of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's when you vote no.
Well, I might not be here, more than likely, I won't be here.
But then they would have to meet the rest of these codes to...
I was just, I'm writing it down.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
I think it's great.
I don't, I don't, it's hard to read too.
There's going to be more than that. Two or more, I'm in favor. How about four or more?
I think that makes sense, two or more.
It is a name, two or more.
Yeah, two singles side by side are two or more in a park, is, we, like the mayor said, he gives you, gives us more authority.
You have a license, you have to have inspection, it actually lets us police it better.
Stricter standards when you put more than one on a piece of property.
That's right.
And it ought to be.
Yep.
Who's going to put two trailers with all these, this and this, this investment?
Well, I don't think anybody will. They got some.
Well, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying it'd be pretty.
It wouldn't be me, but he wants to pop off, yeah. Okay, I'm fine. What other? What other comments or suggestions?
Come after the changes. That Ricky said?
No.
He might get the last thing that Ricky said.
About the garbage containers.
Yeah, that they have to be on the.
Not on the street.
Yeah, cause the order of business to keep this going, we will have to make a motion.
To amend, right.
And then put all these amendments in, vote on that, we agree with that, and then vote on the, on the ordinance. But I want to make sure everybody's got, you know, everything in.
Sure.
And compliance that we talked about too, look into that other, those other trailer parks.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that's not in this, that's just something we will do.
We'll visit later.
Yeah, we'll visit later. You can pick me up on any new cars and we'll go ride. Test drive.
Go test drive, he's sure.
Bring a truck, I need another truck. Is everybody comfortable with it? This is good, I mean, we worked it through the last meeting, we worked it through this meeting, this is, this, this is good, thank y'all. Then, uh, I entertain a motion to make all these amendments.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilor Toromo, and who is the second, uh, Councilman David Merrill. Laney, do you want to read off, cause it's a lot of stuff, do you want to read off the amendments, you want each person to say theirs?
Just so I know that I have them. We're keeping new in the title, correct, standards of new mobile home parks?
I think we're keeping it.
We're taking new out.
I thought we were keeping new because we had to just go ahead and change the old ordinance. Because we can't put in effect for the old.
So fifty seventy two will say new.
And we did talk about keeping it as new.
New, yes.
Because it would make the old trailer parks have to comply to the new trailer park rules and that's not fair.
It's new.
Okay, but we do want to add the clause, not, not to this one, but to the old one, yes, okay.
Well, we started working on that one.
We gotta work on that one now.
We only have one though. I mean, we only have one ordinance.
Yeah, but this is, this, this section is gonna be, what, what we said, this section was gonna be new. No? We said we were leaving new in, and this, this, this would be.
Can I ask a question? So, so Jeff, my question to you, and you brought it up twice. If we, if there's several councilmen up here that, that want to address the question of existing trailer parks, are we gonna create a whole another ordinance? Or should we attach it to this one at a later date?
Well, my suggestion was, as, as Brooke said originally, take new out of the title. And then in fifty seventy, say this division applies to all mobile home parks except that building standards shall apply only to new mobile home parks.
Okay, that's where we put. Okay, that's where we put new.
Yeah, operational standards apply to everything.
All right.
And we only have one ordinance. And then you could say in fifty seventy two, new mobile home sites.
Right, not existing.
So, so to finish my statement, so as the mayor suggested, if we wanted to address the concern that several, we'd put it in operational standards, if we wanted to address it in the same ordinance.
Yes, yeah, we'll come back and do that as a later date.
Even the old ones have to be neat and tidy and so on and so forth.
That's fine.
Okay.
They're clear, I'm clear.
Next, Madam Clerk.
Basically, that the manager shall be a responsible tenant.
Deleted.
Fifty seventy one.
Fifty seventy one.
We remove that one.
Remove.
First it was deleted, and then Troy said that they just have to be responsible.
No, if I can, that's, that's already in fifty seventy four.
Yeah, so just delete it out of that.
It's, I meant to say it was covered in fifty seventy.
Made him responsible somewhere though.
Yeah.
And then fifty something, we're taking out the drinking cup part?
Yes, and, and cleaning the toilets and the tubs and the showers, that all comes out. Unless they, unless they pay a lot of rent.
Which one is that, Troy?
Old fifty seventy eight, new fifty eighty, I believe.
That's in fifty seventy eight eighty?
Yeah.
Water system?
Water system.
I think you just take out those two sentences. The water shall be obtained from faucets only.
That would be deleted. Would keep the first sentence only. And then in fifty seventy nine eighty one, garbage and disposal, the second paragraph, the owner operator. Maintain such park toilets, showers and other equipment and other improvements in a clean and sanitary condition at all times. We'd delete that.
And then I think in fifty eighty one, we said all containers have to be on private property.
And not of the right amount, correct.
That's fifty seventy nine eighty one, that's right.
And can we include a sentence that would distinguish between private road and, and public road access?
And, and that's how you want to word. Want a definition of the public road or the?
Isn't there a certain standard, is the public roads different standard than private roads?
Right, but that's covered in our subdivision ordinance or in, you know, other, some other area. I just don't know how far to go with it, so I was.
Well, if it's covered in our subdivision, do we need to rephrase it in here, cause it.
All we really need to do, I think, to cover what Troy's point would be to define the private road. Since he, you know, I don't know what's in his head, I'm gonna let him.
So private drives can be gravel or shell?
No, they still need to be asphalt or concrete.
So when, would we say when installed, all streets private and or public? Or all private streets must be composed. And then after that, say in, any or all public streets will, will adhere to.
The way we talked about, yeah, the way we talked about it was both private and public roads could either be asphalt or concrete. But public roads have to meet a higher standard.
Right, and that's all I'm trying to distinguish.
If we just said that, to me, that would clear it up.
Right.
Here Laney?
Would it be when installed?
So.
Private streets must be blah, 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 and then public streets shall meet.
Yeah, city standards.
Do we have a definition of private roads?
I mean, we don't, because, because they're private.
No, that, no, that's good, then, then all we're insisting is that.
So I said, if you define either the private or the public, you're good, so in this case, those are private, this is public, public meets this.
Right.
And it was to their best interest to make a nice private road, cause we're gonna come inspect it, if it's all cracked up, we're gonna make them fix it.
Right, but they're not forced to have curb and gutter or and or.
Right.
That, that was my only determinant, just to clarify, more than manage it.
Yeah.
I think you already covered the management part of it, that you can inspect it and, and require repairs.
Good, good.
If I can come up with a simple word, I'll offer it and y'all can, y'all can discuss it.
Yeah, sure.
In the process, while she's amending it.
Yeah, sure. Does anybody have any other? Amendment? Yes, sir.
I'd suggested that near the end of fifty seventy two, we say onto any new or existing mobile home park site. So that we would have that ten year limitation for all parks.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, I don't know, that's up to Jeff if he covers it here. Laney was asking if we still had to go change the, any part of the other ordinance, cause we say in that. I'm gonna do, we're gonna do that.
The other ordinance is not gonna exist, because these are the same numbers. And what we're doing is, um, we're amending the old ordinance to say this.
Oh, I mean, nonconforming uses.
No. I think if we say the building standards apply only to new mobile home parks.
Yeah. And operational to everything else.
Now, whether or not the single mobile home on a piece of property has to be, if you, if you replace it within the year, has to be younger than ten years. Yeah, you need a, you need to go to nonconforming uses to deal with that, cause that's not a park.
Right, right. Okay, so we just clean that up?
Yeah, just change it to nonconforming uses.
Okay.
Like before we went six months to a year, amended the same thing to say, but it has to be younger than ten years.
Okay, alright. So for this, that's all of our changes, okay, is everybody good with that? So we had a motion on the floor to amend, so.
In a second.
In a second, so now we need to vote our machines. Alright, thank you.
Okay, so now it's amended.
Now I gotta vote on that, yes. So, I need a motion back on this new amendment.
So moved.
Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Troy Como, is there any discussion on this now amended?
Don't think, going back to the old uh ordinance, where they existed, I think ten years is, is in there already.
No, it's twenty something years.
You sure, when we changed, upgraded it?
No, twenty something years.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's.
I thought it was in there.
I don't think so, any, uh, any other comments or discussion? Am I good, then please vote your machines. Thank you very much, good work. As always. Madam Clerk? Rebe.
Special ordinance number twenty twenty four twenty twenty five eighteen, an ordinance amending the budget to provide for further drainage improvements, professional services and vac all truck.
I need a motion to open this public hearing. Councilman Brooke Marcot and Councilman Ron Davis, is there anyone here to comment on this item? Hearing seen none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Brooke Marcot, now I'm off to the main motion.
Motion.
Councilman Brooke Marcot and Councilman David Merrill. This item is one point five million dollars, this is the money we've been talking about. Um, this does engineering services, pays for drainage projects. We, we put it all together, buys the vac all truck. Um, so this is everything involved with all of the drainage work that we're taking on. Uh, not only from the flooding, but also to be preventative or for future flooding in other areas and the new vac all truck.
So as of now, everything is happening, I mean, as soon as we vote on this. It's everything happening, but the truck, truck, you said it might take nine months?
The truck won't come for a while, we took bids on the truck, we're not positive what we're gonna do. We took bids today, I'll be bringing that next time, I didn't cram it onto this agenda, cause I'm not sure if we're gonna go with that truck or if we're gonna rebid, we, we're not sure what we're gonna do yet, we're, we're looking at some options on the specs. Um, but yes, what's happening is, this is the money we've been talking about, this puts the money in play because we, we are engineers are working, we are, we have more money coming, we've been blessed from Baton Rouge with for next year. Getting four million dollars more, uh, four point two actually, um, with the money that we have. We're also doing some engineering, because we're pretty confident that the court permit is coming pretty soon, and then that frees up some other drainage money, so in this money. This is allowing us to remediate issues now, plan for future things that need to be done. And at the same time, even plan some engineering for what's coming, because we have drainage money to spend. And then once we get this new money, we're not gonna overextend ourselves, I won't plan for something until I get the funds, but we have enough funds to keep going with additional drainage projects, and I don't want to hold anything up, I mean, we were already sweating, you know, crews today, we're putting out barricades, we got sand going. We got, you know, we have that threat of a, of a possible storm. I don't want to quit, I don't want to slow the train down, and that's why I said if we could get all the money approved now, then I don't have to keep coming back and as engineers have things online, there, uh, you know, Highland is taking the most research. Um, they're almost finished with that model, because they had to do a hydrology model to figure that out. Uh, plantation, we made some immediate repairs that we could do, we got creative with a few, uh, other little things we did. But we need engineering that they're working on to fix a main problem there. Uh, Summerfield, we went in and as y'all know, you know, the last couple of meetings we've been talking about it. We, we took over ditches that, that were for the HOA, we got a farmer to help us, we did out in the parish, we've done all kind of stuff. But there's another project that needs to be done, um, Acadian Acres, our engineers and this will help. We're actually gonna hire, uh, finstamakers to do a small part of this, they're the ones with the detention pond. So we're gonna talk to them with some of this money and say, tell us how we, we're not even finished yet, we can't go to the core now. We gotta get the first project started, but how could you expand that, so, so we could, as soon as that's approved, we could come back. I don't want to hold that project up, it's taken long enough, we could come with some other engineering concepts and look at getting core approval to add on to that, so it's a whole lot of stuff, uh, St. Edwards, we're beginning to camera, St. Edwards is always flooded. We cameraing pipes around St. Edwards, you know, as soon as they can give me an answer on that, we didn't have house flooding there, but we have flooding. We, uh, we're looking at other areas around town that, uh, you know, DePuria and Lawrence and Trotter Street had more water on it than I've ever seen. Well, something's wrong, so, you know, every area that we can, this money gets me more horsepower to investigate. And we have other, every, every district has, you know, hotspots, um, some that we haven't even hit yet, so that gives me the ability to plan for, you know, these projects that are coming. Everybody got, you had your hand up first.
So Freddie?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's, I mean, that was a great explanation of what we're doing, let's, let's talk a little numbers on, on Barbette for a minute, Barbette, so seven hundred and five thousand to one point five million and adjusted by the two point two million, I just want to let the people know that we're doing very good in our drainage fund, especially with the mosquito and the core possibly coming, and, and what's our, our fund balance right now? You still let the people know, we got money to fix drainage and we're gonna fix it.
We're working on it.
Right, before these adjustments, our balance was about six and a half.
So six and a half million.
But be clear, three point one of it is held for. Because you don't go spend money until you get money, so when we have the grant, when the court permit's done and the state says, you know, here's your money. Then we free that three million up, three million up. What we have coming, and we had a little extra money that came in from the, that we get back from mosquito, so that's in the pot. Um, and then I have to, I have to reserve some for a match, because we're gonna get four point two million next year, thanks to Baton Rouge. But we're gonna have to come up with a one point two million dollar match. And that's in there too.
That's right, so, and I, I just want to be crystal clear, because, you know, recently I, I asked for some information in the parish on some drainage money. But I want to make sure out in front that the mayor just explained that we got money in drainage, we addressing issues, we spending the money where it takes it, and we got more money if we see more issues, and we on top of it.
And the reason I'm asking for one point five is that I can go investigate and find the rest of those issues, cause from what I see so far, there is no way, I mean, all of our systems are so old. There's no way we're not gonna uncover, I don't know what I'm gonna find around St. Edwards, I don't know what I'm gonna find in some other areas, you know, all the pipes might be too small. Uh, we well, could be that we need a project to change, upgrade all the pipes, um, anyway, thank you, yes, sir.
So, uh, this will also include that engineering part to ID the measurements of the pipes and everything and mapping and all this.
In all of this, you know, um, and, and Laney's becoming an expert in our new GIS system. But as they develop, the company that is just doing cameraing, they will find the problems and they will GIS all these lines. Okay, they'll, they'll be able to map them for us, now I'm gonna see who's cheaper, because the other company that we use in Louisiana, uh, you know, the blasting company that's going in and cleaning everything. I will get a price from both companies to clear up the problem. When the guys camera it, that company can clear up the problem, at the same time, I'll get the leopries in and get a price from them. And that way I'll decide who, or maybe sometimes, Public Works might be able to clear it up, uh, depending on what it is. But yeah, we're, we're doing this process of investigating all over town, with every company helping us looking in the pipes, which we've never had that before.
Uh, you mentioned St. Edwards, uh, which normally does flood in that area. But the Field Street area right there by the railroad tracks, going back toward Hopkins Street or Corrine, holds water.
Yes.
Well, lengthy period of time, and it goes down St. Jude.
Right, so I have that as a secondary area, I have, you know, right in front of our, uh, where you come out the drive right here. Used to not, but ever since they resurfaced the road, uh, when the state came in, we hold water right there, we hold water on Charles Street. We hold water, you know, we have about six or seven spots that it might not get in the houses, but we really hold water in the street. Those are on the list too, as soon as I finish, the ones that are critical that, you know, people's houses are flooded. Yes, sir.
And you're getting, I'm glad you explained that, and the people that's, that we are paying out there now with the trailer. Right, the people know that, it's not the city, it's some people we hired for.
Correct, correct.
And you got, right now in a city, you have three different contractors working on that?
Well, I have, uh, Hydroblast working, cleaning, the new company starts next week, which is the camera company that's in separate areas. And they are feeding our engineer Chandler Staples information, that's why they're there to get this going quicker. So they're cameraing for Chandler and for us, and then we have hydro going, and then we still have our city crews. So that's three different crews that are out there.
So right now, what are they doing, the ones that's out there now, cleaning?
Um, right now, well, they're cleaning and, you know, like Hydroblast cleans and then attacks it and fixes it, okay? Or a combination of Hydroblast and the city, because what happens is, like, we're uncovering some big tree roots that are getting in the joint to that old pipe, well, sometimes either one of us will do it. Some of them are so bad that, that, uh, Public Works is going to dig up pipes, that, you know, where they found something. Well, we're not, we haven't found a lot yet, but, you know, we got a system, and until we check them all, we're not gonna know. Um, but as something uncovers, we're fixing it as we go, but the main thing we have them doing is cleaning drains everywhere and making sure everything's clear. Cameraing it and getting the size of those pipes, because Public Works has been cleaning them, but what we definitely know. We have to prove it in an engineering way, but you know, you got ten, twelve inch pipes that probably could be eighteen, you got eighteen, it probably could be twenty fours. You have areas where a thirty six inch pipe becomes a twenty four inch pipe and then goes back to a thirty six for no reason. So some of this stuff is so old, you can see that it was homemade, it was Public Works, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years ago. So uncovering all of this is a lot different than just saying go clean all the drains, because just cleaning the gr, the drains is what we've always done, it's not cutting it.
So the works being done is cleaning, doing the cameras?
And engineering.
And engineering, nothing else been done yet, changing pipes?
Well, no changing pipes yet, would we, like, okay, and it's weird examples, but they stick in my head, like Plantation Drive, probably thirty years ago. The city went, and you can tell the city did it in-house, and they put drainage boxes in, and then they put a sewer cover on top, I guess, cause they had them. Okay, so there's eighteen, nineteen, I don't know, seventeen drains, they have a small slit. Okay, well, one, we're gonna make that open and larger, we haven't done that yet, cause we waiting for the engineer to tell us if the pipes are good. On the flip side, we got rain coming, so we bought nine, uh, I really needed double that, I needed sixteen, I think, but anyway. We bought nine and ran and got them, and we took the sewer covers off and put covers that actually have slits in them, like a drain grate. Okay, and then Chandler went, because why do that if that's higher than the house slab? It was lower, only one house by two tents, okay, but it was lower than all the houses on the street. So we hurried up and put the nine or ten that we have, waiting on the rest of them to come in in two weeks, pop them in, because that will move a lot of water. It might bring the water higher than you want, but it's stopping from getting in your house, so anywhere we see. Uh, you know, if we, we got some right aways that we went door to door to get on Russo to clean a, a ditch behind, well, thank you Brooke. Uh, Brooke and Hillary and I went and did that, well, we. Well, we hurried everyone and cleaned that because Chandler thought that that was a way to move some water pretty quickly. So as he uncovers something or we find a, a new something, or if we only had the right away, or if we only had seen this before, we running around and getting that to make things happen.
Yeah, I just want, as Ricky mentioned, to let people know, we have the money.
Yeah.
It's not a wish and we doing work now.
Yes, definitely, definitely. And I'll be bringing in, uh, uh, maybe not with all this money. I might wait on some. But I do plan on Bayrod Habits, there's some things that, that they could do. Cause I can't, Chandler's gonna get maxed out. Chandler's, uh, we talked today. Chandler's a one man firm. He's gonna be doing a lot of this work and we trust him. But he's gonna get to a limit that he's gonna say, things are gonna have to wait. I don't want anything to wait. So Bayrod Habits will probably pick the slack up and do some projects. And then Finstermaker, you know, Finstermaker got us the grant that is putting three million back into our account for the, the pond. So what I want Finstermaker to do is look at expanding that pond because they already have the hydrology models. They already have everything. They've been working. It took them a year and something to design this, so they know what they designed. If I see another project that Finstermaker could get us the grant for, well, then I'm gonna talk to them and that'll be the next project I give them. You know, just in a way to, to, you know, speed up some of this.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Everybody good? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Three C.
Ordinance number twenty-two-five-nineteen. An ordinance providing for the levy within the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, effective July first, twenty-two-five of a point two-five sales and use tax. The tax upon the sale at retail, the use, the consumption, the distribution, the storage for use or consumption, and the lease or rental of tangible personal property and the lease or rental of tangible personal property or digital products within the city and upon sales of services in the city and for the assessment, collection, payment thereof and the dedication of the proceeds of said tax and the purpose for which the proceeds of the tax may be expended, said tax having been authorized at a special election held in the city on March twenty-ninth, twenty-two-five.
I need a motion to open this public hearing. Councilman Brooke Morkat and Mayor Proton Ricky Goncal. Is anyone from the public to speak on this item? Then I need a motion to close.
So move.
Second. Yeah, Proton Ricky Goncal, Councilman Brooke Morkat. Now we go to the main motion. I need one. Councilman David Merrill, Councilman Ron Davis. Is there any discussion on this? Everybody good? And I ask you, please vote your machines. Thank you. Four A.
Resolution number twenty-five-sixty-nine, a resolution appointing Doug Louvier to the Fire and Police Civil Service Board for a three-year term.
Before I get the motion, Doug is here. Thank you, Doug. Thanks for your service so far. And I need a motion.
So move.
Councilman Dan Dahl and Councilman Troy Como. Uh, Jeff had his hand up.
Yeah, I think there's a typo in that, um.
In what?
Resolution, I think Wyatt Collins' name is in it, in the second paragraph.
Oh, sorry. I mean, we're like him too, but this is for Doug.
You got Doug in the title and Doug in the first paragraph, so.
I've got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion or questions, comments? Everybody good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you, Doug. You get another term. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
You'd have to talk.
You'd get a raise. Your second term, you get a raise.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing to, double nothing.
Twice as much.
Twice as much. Thank you, man. Poby.
You can go have something now.
Resolution number twenty-five-eighty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate the maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-two-six and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So move.
Mayor Proton Ricky Goncal, Councilman Brooke Morkat, this is the same contract that we do, um, we get paid for every year to cut the right aways and stuff.
Do they ever go up?
Not really. I mean, a little bit, but not really.
And it's take it or leave it, right?
Yes, there is no real. We put negotiating because it's the wording on everything, but basically you take it. We could always not take it and not cut the right aways and then our town would look like, you know, you know what? So we can't do that, but you know, no community, uh, gets reimbursed for what they spend. But it's something. It's better than nothing.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
We, we do this in-house or we subcontract on?
We do it in-house, but I am looking into subbing out some grass. Uh, I'm, I'm actually been having those discussions. I am looking into possibly bringing in some private contractors because we are falling further and further behind because more and more individuals are not keeping up their yards and more and more people are relying on the city to be their yard man. It's expensive, but that's what they do. So we're not catching up. We have, uh, you know, we've always had manpower shortages. So I'm in the process of coming up with a system and I will start small, but taking a few bids. There are also some things that are problem areas that Public Works doesn't do. So there might be an opportunity to do a little bit of that here and there of, of just cleaning and maybe cleaning a little more, you know? The big thing we have problems with is that, you know, we're never gonna cut trees. That's not for us to do. But there are times, I do notice on these chronic properties, okay? And I'm not judging anybody. It's just is what it is. We cut them, but it's a process to get there. So it's already over twelve inches when they turn it in. It takes a while to do the notice and everything else and then we have a backlog. So it might be fifty days before you go cut the grass. You know how tall it is now? Okay? Well, what we're also doing is we're cutting, but you know, you're leaving two, three inches to the fence. And then you're leaving six inches to the fence. And then, you know, things start growing and then it gets worse and worse and then you, you know, you go and ride by and we're not lawn people. We're not a lawn scapeing service, but everything looks kind of rough. It gets cut, but it looks rough now, you know? It's, it's, it's because someone didn't take care of their property is why we're there. But at the same time, when I possibly bring in some private contractors, I'm gonna see if I can get, you know, a little more out of them because they're more used to doing, you know, yards that have to look well. So we'll see how it plays out in pricing, but that is something that I'm exploring right now.
I would be in favor of that. I would, I would support that.
And I'll be bringing it to you. I don't sign anything or do anything without y'all. Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be feasible to probably, to give them the bid on just what the state allows us to cut? Or that's the, pretty much the gravy work, right?
It's kind of the easy stuff.
Yeah.
In other words, what, uh, we're never gonna get rid of our people. So, and we made this huge investment in lawnmowers and equipment and everything else. So if I let them keep cutting, although it's been a little difficult to train them not to throw the grass in the street, now people don't give us a break either. We're cutting and grass is going in the street and the deal is you can throw it in the street. You just gotta pick it up. Well, they call in my office like crazy and not giving us time to pick it up. So people send me pictures. People send me this. Your guys throwing the grass in the street? I mean, we have a plan and we're picking it up. We either send the public, the, uh, street sweeper or we got a crew that picks it up. But they kind of like to not give us a chance to pick it up. But that's kind of the gravy. So I think we would keep that and maybe try to give away.
Difficult stuff.
Difficult stuff. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea too, because the guys, the city workers, they're not gonna be able to clean their yards, those yards like, say, the person that lived there because me and Matt talked about that today.
Were they doing better than the person that, no, no one lives there. Or sometimes they were doing better because they're not cutting the grass.
Nobody lived there, but I'm saying the grass, like you said, I get so high on Evangela on one of the spots and then on my other spot on by yard, the grass got so high, when the city came to cut it, it was big piles up of grass in the yard, still in the yard.
We're making hay.
You know what I'm saying? And it's like, you know, if we had somebody else too extra that they could take that with them when they do that.
Or they would cut it quicker. And that's what I was hoping was that, you know, some of these people who will be there lawn service, we just put them on a rotation. But if you have a private company coming in, you could meet those deadlines. Cause the other thing, remember, Public Works will stop on that. They've been cleaning drains like crazy because we might have a storm coming. They, they hauling sand for sandbags. Anytime something happens in the street, they gotta go deal with it. Anytime a tree fall, we had a tree fall yesterday. I don't know why. They had to go cut it out of the road. So they get held up to go do all this other stuff while that grass is growing.
Yep.
Somebody with grass would just be doing the grass. So I think it would be a, a regular schedule.
And the private guys are fat.
They are. Yes, sir.
Yeah. I think it'd be a great idea if we can get some contractors.
Okay.
Uh, cause I know Public Works is kind of shorthanded at times, uh, and all the other work that's being done that they have to do. But on the note of trees, I know we don't cut trees, but on a lot of these properties, there are trees that are down, have been down for a long time. I mean, they house termites and different things along that line. So, uh, is there something we can do about that?
I don't know. We've never, we can't keep up with what we're doing now. And so we've never amended anything or done anything that we would start cutting trees.
Well, it's just that some of them have been down for a long time and we know that these are some lots that, uh, we're cutting.
Yeah.
But trees are still there and it's cutting around.
Well, let me get the prices, not, you know, let me get the prices on what private contractors are gonna cost us before I add more work to us. Because, you know, I don't know if private contracts are gonna be more. We're, we're actually, Babette and I are working budget numbers now. We work them first ourselves and then I bring in each department head. We will adopt the budget by October first, you know? So it's coming, first meeting and I was, either the last meeting in September, the first meeting is October is when I adopt the budget. So that's why I'm also getting prices now and starting to figure out a system. So let, let me do that before I commit to more work.
See, I've seen where, uh, some of these trees, you might have, uh, uh, carpenter bees, hornets in them. There may be roaches. There may be termites, all type of things like that.
I'm sure they are.
So, uh, yeah, it'd be well worth the money.
Yeah, well, let, let me just look and see before, like I said, before I take on more. Let's get the grass cutting straight first and then we'll have something else to talk about. Yes, sir.
When we call in a complaint with a landowner and we cut their grass, send a letter to cut their grass, doesn't that go on their tax against their taxes?
Yes, it does.
So that would cost a little more with a private. At one point, we would get our money back with some of these.
Well, we have many, many of them. We're never gonna get our money back. I'm not being ugly. There, there's so many properties, you know, we have five hundred adjudicated properties.
Yeah.
We didn't get our money back.
I think.
I get our taxes.
And we not getting our taxes. So, but, but some of them, private, well, you know, will probably be more because sometime we do get our money back.
And you can, you can really, some of the houses.
We need a combination.
Yeah, some of the houses, you probably can, um, really look and know that we might get our money back.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the one maybe we can send the private people to if it costs a little more to, to, um.
Huh. All right.
No?
Yeah, no, that's, you, you're right. I mean, I don't know.
Well, you know, some of the houses that.
Yeah.
I mean, some of them people are living in it.
All right.
That's true.
My point is, I need somebody to cut some grass.
Anybody else?
No shame.
Yeah, no shame. No shame. I love it. Is there any other discussion? Back to what we're really talking about is the state contract. But is there any other discussion? I love this.
I forgot where we were.
Everybody, yeah. Everybody's good? Then please vote your machines. Well, you made my job easy for the next time when I bring some grass contract. So that's good. I don't mind. Uh, four C.
Resolution number twenty-five-eighty-three, a resolution authorizing an increase in the scope of work for Compliance Environment Systems LLC for additional storm drain evaluation services per the project engineer.
This is our camera company and we already expanding other areas. So that's what this is about. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Uh, Councilman Troy Como and Councilman Brooke Morkat. Any discussion on this? Like I said, this is just to allow us to do some additional camera in some other areas. Cause it won't be long. We'll be able to start in those areas that are holding water. And if no questions or comments, please vote your machine. Thank you. All right, uh, five A.
Special ordinance number twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five-nineteen. An ordinance amending the budget to account for mosquito control and drainage improvements and setting for public hearing on August fifth, twenty-two-five.
I need a motion.
Move.
Councilman David Merrill and who is the second? Looks like everybody wants, Councilman Brooke Morkat. Any questions or comments on this one?
Mayor, did our revenue increase with mosquito control?
Yes, sir. Five hundred forty-five thousand dollars. That's why we're admitting this, which goes to drainage, which can only be spent on drainage. So, you know, that's a good thing.
Yes. So when someone, when they spray for mosquitoes or someone calls mosquito control to go spray by their home, as of right now, um, they aren't a schedule. We don't make that schedule. Is that correct?
No, no.
So they're on their own schedule.
We can request, we need in this area, that area, but they, they run, the whole show they run. We pay taxes as citizens and then at the end of the year, they divvy up equally by percentage to all the municipalities where they got the money from. That's, you know.
Wait, that, my point is, is that some people's like, hey, I heard mosquito control was out tonight. They didn't come up my house. It's been six months. We don't make that schedule.
No, we don't.
But if they do want it, they can call directly.
Yes.
And get them.
And request it.
I just wanted to get that straight.
Yeah, because it's not us. We don't, we don't, we don't do that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We don't have a plan.
Yeah. And if you're having a special function, you can call and request that and they will come and sit in your driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they do a very good job with that. We, I don't think enough people are maybe are using them, but.
Well, no, but you don't use them too much because then we won't get as much drains from you.
Not concerned about that, Mr. Trump. I'll say this.
Yes, sir.
Despite of all the water we had, uh, it seems like it's working. I haven't seen a whole lot of problem with mosquitoes, uh, in town anyway. I don't know what everybody else's opinion is.
They do come out pretty quick. I had somebody call me about a month ago.
No, it's good. It's a good turn.
For an event and, uh, wanted to know about it.
For an event, and wanted to know about it, and they came out the day before the event and took care of it.
Oh, yeah.
It's an outside event, so.
Cool, any other questions or comments? Please vote your machines. Alright, 6A.
Babette Lestrap, should present monthly budget to actual report for November 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So, we're, this report is from November to June, which is for eight months of the fiscal year, which is 67% of our year. Everything is aligning with budget. Occupational licenses, we've actually, it reached our budget, we've at 100%, 103% of our budgeted revenues for occupational licenses. And I just saw the amendment for the mosquito control, we did receive those funds in June. The funds we received totaled 1.3 million.
This year was around 600 something thousand, correct?
We had 800,000 budgeted. No, last year we received just over a million.
A million total.
Yeah, we just had a budget.
We have, we budget conservatively.
So it's 1.3 versus a million, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's right, we didn't.
Lowered our budget.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's where you got that number from.
It seems like our permits inspections are down, huh?
Let me see.
Because what you just talked about earlier was.
That was occupational licenses.
So that's a good thing.
Right.
Meaning more people buying licenses of open businesses.
And more people are paying for their license, because we had a little issue that a couple of years ago, we were not collecting everything.
I mean, we early to get that 100%.
Yes, we are, no, they're doing a really good job.
Explain the difference.
But we kind of revamped how we do it, because we did have a lag for a while, that it was not where it needed to be, and they, that office has done a really good job of.
I just saw, I'm looking at that, permits.
Yeah, the permits is basis, that's just based on new construction and things going on in the city.
You know, that's what happens when we don't have the opportunity. And I think you can see that change with a couple subdivisions. When we can't enlarge, we can't get any more new construction happen.
Yeah, yeah.
And I knew sooner or later that's going to be an issue. You know, our sales tax is up, our occupation license is up, but our permits are down because there's not new construction really happening. But that doesn't mean new people are not coming in. I had a discussion with somebody today about new Iberia growing, so you don't have a clue, it's growing big.
Well, our taxes wouldn't be up, and we wouldn't be able to do the things we're doing if we weren't, if our economy wasn't growing.
Right. I'm trying to explain the difference.
The physical footprint, you know, we've annexed a couple of times, and it's been, it's been a fight and, you know, a big journey to annex. So the physical footprint doesn't change as much as I would like to see.
Right.
But on the flip side, what people don't see is the infills, the remodels, the smaller projects, or the new businesses that come, and the fact that our sales taxes are up, and thank God it is.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to make the difference, people, they say this, they don't really know that we're spending money we have, it's not money, you know, they don't understand that. People always say, well, you know, Iberia's not growing, you don't have a clue, it's growing big.
Just explain it to them.
Huh?
Just explain it to them.
Yeah, I do.
There's a lot of that going on.
Yeah, you know.
I tell them that government can't spend anything it didn't take from anybody else, and we spend it. So it had to come from somewhere. And it came from the taxpayers, and I remind myself every day, that's their money, and we need to spend it. We need, we're not a bank, we need to put it back into.
So I think in October, before we adopt our budget, we're going to have a little thing about how many new businesses came in.
Okay.
That would be shocking to most people.
You remember the time I put that thing up last year?
You got to show your sales tax for the last five years.
But I mean, that's what people need to know, because.
Yeah, well, in budget time would be a good time to kind of look at that.
I think it'd be great information. Thank you.
Babette.
Yes, sir.
Maybe Freddie can answer, Capa Plex Fund, we got 4.1 million, is that the money from the state sitting in there?
That's the money sitting, that we are finishing the plans to put it out for bid.
So that is the grant money sitting there, okay.
That's the capital outlay money.
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay.
Thank you.
Thank you, state.
Y'all, thank you, state, you're a kid.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Everybody good? Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, councilman's remarks, and Brooke, I'll start with you.
Okay, I just want to let everybody know that there are sandbags and sand at Acadian Ballpark. If anyone feels like they need them for what might be a little storm coming, we're not really sure where it's going to go, but just to be prepared, they do have sand and sandbags at Acadian Ballpark. Also, if we don't get a storm Friday, the Evangeline Little League All-Stars will be playing in a state tournament in Bruceard. Their game's at 4 o'clock on the red side, Field 2. So if y'all want to come watch, come on down, and that's it.
Thank you.
I would, I'm just like to get an update at some point soon about the demolition of the homes, and my ears are burning. People are concerned at the individual spots, and I think the sooner we can knock those houses down, the more permits, we're going to be able to get to build new houses.
I agree, sir.
That's potentially 500 new houses that could go up in one capacity or another, once, if we tear down those 500 homes.
That's, you, a slight exaggeration, that's adjudicated property. I don't know when you do that, that much, but I agree with you, it needs to move.
That'll make the sales taxes and the permits go up.
We're accepting bids next Thursday.
Some of the UK.
13.
No, so our grant project.
Oh, the grant project.
And we'll hopefully award it at the next meeting on the 5th.
Oh, awesome. Accepting bids.
That's for, that's for the ARPA ones or the state?
No, the state.
That's the state.
It's the demo grant.
That's the demo grant. And then the ARPA ones, our other batch, when are they coming?
I am supposed to get a notice to proceed out tomorrow.
Okay, so, so, finally those are starting. And then once those get underway, then we can go back to our regular demo process.
So we're accepting bids, say it again? This week?
Which one?
On the state demo grant?
State demos, I'm accepting bids on the 24th.
July 24th.
Yes, and then hopefully awarding on the 5th.
You know about how many properties that is?
13. Because somebody called me today, asked if it was 13, I sent them the map, that's what he said.
Yeah, but I thought somebody dropped out.
Or maybe they dropped out.
No, these are just the ones without asbestos.
Yeah, yeah.
About 10 or 12, give or take.
Yeah, including yours.
Amen.
Yours, you know.
Mr. Bruce O'Hara.
Yeah, he called it this.
The poster job.
Yep.
Oh boy, you talking about going to be a grave night.
Thank you.
You done?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm good.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to make a question right quick, Civic Source, we talked about that a while back, are we still going to look at moving away from them?
We, yes, yes.
Yeah, because.
In the process of looking at that. I'm not saying that they won't handle some stuff, but we're going to have some option.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, because, matter of fact, I have Ms. Carol Whip coming to my neighborhood watch meeting Thursday night, and also Cory, him and Penat that's doing the new houses and stuff like that, with the stuff like that, they're going to be there too. Penat is out of the country, but Mr. Cory is going to come.
Okay.
But those ideas comes real good, because when you look at Civic Source and some of the properties that could be sold, you know, you're looking at some of those houses, what they were talking about, and some other people that I was talking to, they might be looking at trying to get some of those houses to, to build some nice little houses in those properties. And they got some good funding that can help people between 38,000 up to 50,000, as far as their income, to be able to afford it, and not be on HUD and stuff like that as well.
We remember when they came a couple weeks ago, I said, I'll give you some of my, go figure something out.
That's, that's some good stuff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask, the road projects, have they got started yet?
The one contract starts Monday, and then the other two, I mean, they've all been bid, where they all in the paperwork phase, if you will. The second one, which is the streets, concrete streets, it should start, his time has started. No? The reconstruction, his time has started on the contract, so he's supposed to start next week. The concrete streets, it's coming, I don't think it's going to be long, and then the asphalt overlay, we have a low bidder. That's probably a month and a half away to even start, by the time he does his bond, his paperwork, immobilizes. I mean, within this year, they will all get started, but, you know, they've all been bid, we've done our part. They've all been bid, the engineer, you know, did their part. It's just, you know, all their time is starting, all the contracts are, you know, all the bids are let.
Well, I mean, and that's good news, because, I mean, the roads are.
Oh, we know, we know.
They'll be getting some much-needed attention, so to the public, just be patient, and, you know, of course, they got the laws that pass with the cell phone, not being able to have your cell phone up, because that is a fine now. But the road construction, that brings out more hazard and everything, and remember that kids are out of school, so just pay attention to the roadway and everything that's happening.
Good, and while we're talking roads, and if you think state again, I got a half million dollars in cash coming, that will be for roads, and that will probably not hit till October, I guess. So we'll figure out what we're going to do with the half a million, but that's my seed money. With them giving us that, next year, we will get capital outlay funds for roads like we did for drainage this year. So, when our project is beginning to wrap up, probably the way this works, you got a year, year and a half of roads, if we can get, I'm not going to be cocky, but if we can get two or three million more out of the state, I have the match sitting there, and we'll leave the match, we have about 2 million sitting. So if I get 3 million out of them, that gives me five more for roads. If I don't get 3 million out of them, I've got 2 more million for roads. So, and a million also tucked aside in case we have change orders, because you know it is going to be change orders. I haven't gone through the 12.5 million dollar road program, there was change orders. So, we're not going to be done with our roads, and we're trying to leverage the money that we have left to make it go further. Right now, we spent 12.5, we finished that in 21 or 22? 22, I don't know, into 21 maybe, anyway. So we spent 12.5, we're spending 17.1, we have another million that we got that's going to do Iberia Street, and then I'm holding, you could say 2 million, because I bet you we're going to have a million dollars in change orders. So, you could say 2 million I'm holding, that we might actually turn that into 4 or 5. So, you know, before, we will have spent, I know it doesn't seem like it, but that's how bad our roads were, we will have spent, you know, 30 million dollars on roads.
Yeah, question, with those funds that we're talking about in relation to roads, I mean, I noticed in town, there's a lot of curb and gutter type of systems, and some of them are holding water. So, the funds that you're talking about, could that go in to correct those situations?
We have so much roads to do. We are, we, 20% of the roads were good, we've done 20% with the 12.5, and we might do 30% with all the money I just told you is coming and that we're starting to spend. So we're still going to have roads left to do. So I don't know that we're going to make it that far. In other words, I think we will be, unless we pull a rabbit, we did a few things I never thought we'd be able to do already, we will need to find some additional money to keep going. You know, and some of the roads, curb and gutter roads, were designed to hold the water. That's what people don't realize, there's many streets that the streets, the way it was designed, they built the street to trough the water. You might not be able to get out of your, how your house isn't flooding, but we have a lot of areas in some newer subdivisions that.
Terrell Court?
Terrell Court, Terrell Court is designed to. They got water that you can't back out your driveway, you'll flood your car. But it was designed like that, I can't, I can't fix that, you know? But anyway, I do know that we're going to have more roadwork left than we have money. But that's why I'm hustling as much as I can to make that money, you know, go further. Thank you, yes, sir.
Mayor, what is the time that the parks open and close?
Uh, the small parks are dawn to dusk.
What about the city park?
I'm not positive, I'm not, you know, we've changed that over the years, I know it's on the sign in the front, but.
We might want to get that info out.
Okay.
And if there's a law that we have in the city, a lease law, whatever, it still affects when the park is closed.
Yeah, yeah, there's no sunset on a lease law.
Well, we got a situation.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're heading towards something.
So anyway, I would like the public to know, because what times the parks open and close, especially in ma- major parks. You know, like Bank, Hopkins.
Probably on our website, but.
Yeah, because.
Good on the website.
You know, if you go to that park after hours, I'm sure you won't get arrested, but if you're doing something that is not legit, you're going to get arrested. Sometimes the parks close, it shouldn't matter.
Yeah, okay, I'll bring that next time. Oh my God, don't start that.
I'm not talking about a cat.
Alright, this has been a good meeting, I'm going to stop with this, I don't have any comments, so, oh, we got something?
No, just, I just asked Troy, but some of them didn't get your new map, your overlay map on the GSI on the roads. I don't know if they all got it, I wanted to tell them to look at it, the one you did with the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I know Troy didn't get it, I was saying maybe.
I didn't see it either.
But he did, Fred did a really good job, he did a really good job.
We put a map together, shows all the new roads coming, we put it on Facebook, we're trying to be as transparent as we can. As you notice, we've hopped up our Facebook, and we're doing a lot more with it, thanks to a lot of people. One of them's sitting next to me, but.
Not Ricky.
Yeah, 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 one of them's sitting next to me to the right, yeah. Anyway.
He should have did it to the left.
Alright, with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Alright, thank y'all.